I'd like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Simbleton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tennant is absent, and Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Simbleton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion passes. Remarks of visitors? Could I have, uh, Jeff Arp from Murma step up, and I'll be right down there.
While the mayor's coming down, a quick presentation here. I'm on the loss control consultant with Murma. Murma's a self-insurance pool the city's been a member of, I believe, since the mid-eighties. We provide our members with a coverage packet, we handle claims, and we spend a great deal of time, money, and effort promoting the best practices in risk management. We also have a risk grant program that each member can take advantage of. In this past year, we received several applications from the city for assistance in equipment that they needed. The following applications were received and approved. A voltage detector for one thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents works on barricade signage and equipment for seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and trenching and shoring equipment for seven thousand five hundred dollars. In total, nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents was awarded to the city this year through that program. I'd like to thank all the participants that wrote these applications up to get this money here. Congratulations for doing that. I don't have a check, but I do have a nice IOE with some signatures on it. As long as you cash this thing in by June of next year, nine seven hundred dollars there for you. So again, thanks everybody for the participation on this.
Thank you very much. Brittany Howard would step forward, please.
Whereas the city of Festus is pleased to pause and celebrate Brittany Howard on her heroic and quick actions on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at Emo's Restaurant. Brittany recognized the signs of cardiac arrest and quickly responded to victim's aid. And Brittany sprang into action and administered CPR for eight minutes on an Emo's patron during the medical emergency until paramedics arrived. And although many people are trained in CPR, some become hesitant to respond to a real emergency. It is with respect and gratitude that the city of Festus honors the heroic actions and selfless courage of Brittany Howard in the act of saving a life. Now, therefore, I, Samuel F. Richards, Mayor of the city of Festus, Missouri, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four to be Brittany Howard Day in the city of Festus, Jefferson County, Missouri. Congratulations.
Hey, kudos on the, kudos on the eight minutes of CPR. Now, that's a chore. Kudos. That's an excellent job. Eight minutes is an eternity. I'm telling you. Great job.
Bailey Otto, two fifteen Benton Drive. Bailey Otto. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Sorry if my voice is a little raspy. I work for a school district and we're sharing all the germs right now, so, um, all right.
Bailey, you have five minutes for your presentation.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding bill number four eight oh five, which proposes establishing a no parking zone on the north and south sides of the two hundred block of Benton Drive. I am here to respectfully express my opposition to this ordinance. My name is Bailey Otto, and I live with my partner Sean Dees at two fifteen Benton Drive. We've owned this home since two thousand and seventeen. I would like to mention also that Sean would be here with me tonight, but due to work, he was unable to attend. We only became aware of the item on the agenda last week, so we didn't have time to adjust the schedules. I want to provide you with some important context. We value our neighborhood. We enjoy our hobbies, and we keep to ourselves. However, since we moved in, we have faced ongoing issues with our neighbor across the street. I mention this only because I believe that his request for this parking restriction stems from a history of contentious interactions rather than genuine safety or access concerns. To highlight some of these issues, in our experience, this neighbor frequently made uninvited visits, which we found a bit uncomfortable. And after we politely requested some privacy, it seemed that his demeanor shifted, and we began noticing behaviors that felt increasingly disruptive. Over the years, we've documented those instances, just that, in our opinion, seemed intended to disturb the peace. That included revving vehicles, shining lights into our windows, and repeatedly honking unnecessarily when we come home or when we leave to go to work. There've also been some instances where we felt unsafe. Early on, we felt compelled to install cameras around our property due to an interaction that we perceived as threatening toward my partner. Over the years, these cameras have captured behaviors such as shouting at other neighbors, chasing people down the street, and peeling in and out of his driveway. We've repeatedly sought assistance from local law enforcement. They have been helpful. They, they come out every time anyone calls. We've advised, they have advised both parties to avoid contact, and despite this, the behavior persists. So now I would like to speak specifically regarding our driveway. We park at the top of our driveway, which is a deadened street. This ensures we do not obstruct traffic or his driveway. As an aside, recently, a do not park, do not block driveway sign was installed without our prior knowledge, and it's actually situated on our property. But it's, it seems like it's not in the right location for where he, I, I'm not entirely sure why it's there. It basically is saying, don't block our driveway. And then specifically regarding parking in front of our home, we looked up the section three fifty-five zero two zero of the ordinance. A parked vehicle must leave at least ten feet of roadway for free movement of traffic. We measured, and even with our vehicle parked, there's fifteen feet of clearance, more than enough for the emergency, emergency vehicles. Over the years, we've had officers confirm we are not impeding his driveway or traffic flow, including three officers in the last month. Additionally, we have recent photos showing an SUV, a FedEx truck, and a city utility truck were all able to pull into this neighbor's driveway without any issue with several feet to spare, even with our vehicle parked out front. The photos demonstrate our vehicle does not obstruct access for larger vehicles such as emergency vehicles or delivery vehicles. Our parked vehicle also provides a barrier for us. It helps block headlights, reduces the noise from revving engines, and prevents him from quickly swinging into his driveway in, in a disruptive manner. With the vehicle there, he tends to slow down, and that decreases the overall disturbance. I also, it's important to note that this ordinance would impact all residences, sorry, all residents of our street, many of whom utilize parking, street parking regularly for their families and guests. I, I did watch the, the video from last month, and I know that the request was specific to our end of the street, but I then read the bill, and it looks like it's both the north and south side, and that would, so that would be for the street, for our neighbors, if I'm correct. And they do have family park on the street quite often. We're concerned that this neighbor's request may be less about access and more about creating additional opportunities for harassment. For example, on the day the do not block driveway sign was installed, the neighbor contacted the police regarding us parking in our driveway. So what we are asking for tonight is simple. Please consider not approving this ordinance, as it would unfairly burden all residents of Benton Drive while serving another, as another tool for possible harassment. But if needed, we ask that this matter be tabled until the next regularly scheduled meeting to allow further input from all neighbors on Benton Drive and review of any evidence that we can provide, including photos that I have printed and videos. Ultimately, we just want to live peacefully in our home without fear or discomfort. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. I really do appreciate it. Thank you for your time and consideration. So I have these photos, and then the officers had urged us to have a USB of videos as well, if anybody would like that before the next meeting or anything. Thank you for your time. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you. Moving right along. Bids. Police Department. Stalker radar units.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you, I have a bid for new stalker radars for the new vehicles that we have ordered. It's kind of a tight window to get this in. Stalker was offering a buy four, get one free option on their radar units. We needed six, so we figured why not buy five, get one free. We had to pay for one extra, but that'll save us about thirty-four hundred dollars in the long run if we order them before December thirty-first. So what this will be is the six new cars. We always rotate new radar units every time we get new vehicles. Vehicles are usually eight, nine years old by the time we get rid of them, and that's pretty much end of life for most of these units. So we'd just like to refresh them with everything else. And this, this bid is directly from Applied Concepts, which is our stalker dealer. And they are vendor-specific due to the fact that we have stalkers in all our cars. We want to keep those same brand of radars and everything.
So you're asking for five stalker radar systems, and we get a free one?
Correct. And the total price will be sixteen thousand five sixty-one fifty.
Chief, question.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mayor.
Go ahead.
When you talk about end of life for the, like, the radars that you have right now, is there anything that we could do to assure the lifespan of these, like, as far as, like, extra warranties or anything along that way?
Well, basically, kind of what it is, is by the time that seven, eight years, you're starting to have a lot of problems with them. So we normally do auction them off at a public, public auction site afterwards. And the last several times we've done it, there's been a company that came in, would buy them, refurbish them, and resell them. But as far as our side of it, you could buy an extended warranty, but as things break and everything, we always just try to renew, replace them as we replace cars.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to purchase five stalker radios, radar systems, get one free from Applied Concepts for a total purchase price sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simbleton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Motion carries. Chief, buy the units.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, STP grant application for Sunshine Drive.
Good evening, council. The section of Sunshine Drive running through Larry G. Kreitz Memorial Park is a very busy section of road whenever events are hosted at the park. Additional attractions are expected to be added, which will only increase the popularity of the park. We would like to submit an STP application, which will improve safety and pedestrian facilities along Sunshine Drive. This agreement is a supplemental agreement that increases the contract amount that had been approved previously by eight thousand dollars.
Any discussion?
This is with Trek Design Group.
Or as it say, goes Mike, what all are they considering?
So our baseline is that we would want new pedestrian facilities going from animal control or red barn to the end of the asphalt shared use path by the bridge along with new pedestrian crossings that are fully reflective with warning signals for pedestrians. And then any additional funding will just add to what we can add to the project.
Hey, Chief, Wendell, if, since that's a major thorough, and you taught me, uh, since I can't drive with a crap, that's a park zone. What do we need to change it to where pedestrians have their right of way? Because, crap, if I'm wrong, right now, it's thorough traffic, and pedestrians have to yield. Since we're going to turn that into a water park, what do we need to reverse that? Because I think pedestrians need the right of way, and we need to slow people down bad on sunshine.
Um, I'm not sure if we would have to actually pass an ordinance for that. That might be a question for Brian, giving pedestrians the right of way in that area. But some signage to show that also would be, help out some.
I'd have to look at our code to see if we need a new ordinance. I think generally, I'd be inclined to say no, but I want to see the text of it before I commit to that. And yes, I agree, that signage would be a big component regardless.
And just to, just to clarify, both, both these are grant applications, so this is the, the funding to apply for by the February deadline for the next round of STP grant. We, we're not guaranteed anything here. This is merely the application. Okay, I just, I just, yeah. It, it, it's, it's hard to speak to improvements when we don't necessarily have the grant yet. I, I know it's something you've been concerned about, for sure.
Sorry. Have you had a chance to look underneath the bridge and asphalt in that completely and get where the rocks will, if you want to park on the other side, can stay off sunshine and come up around?
We have not looked at anything that falls into the floodplain yet. I think if we get additional funding, that's whenever we can start spacing out into parts that would be affected by the floodplain.
Because we can take material from the floodplain to meet the floodplain certificate requirements and then asphalt.
Yes.
Looking like someone who knows.
Is there any other discussion?
On that crosswalk or safety you're trying to do, are you ask, does you, does it, like, show one or two, or do, or has, does that have anything to do with thing right now, just trying to apply for it?
Originally, whenever we were planning for the Safe Streets for All process, it was that there would be two crossings with a optional third crossing up by the red barn. But that also included some additional safety items that haven't been brought up in this particular application, like the removable safety humps. They're not part of this. And so that cost goes out, so we could possibly adjust it. But as of right now, it's that, for sure, we had talked about the two, because of the two existing that we do currently have there.
Yeah, I mean, two is very important. Like you said, a third one would be a blessing to have, but that's, you know, okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the the eight thousand dollar grant application for Sunshine Drive.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Simbleton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion passes. We also have a application for grant on West Main. Second phase. Third phase. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll just keep adding numbers to it.
Okay.
You'll always be right. This is the STP grant application for West Main Street Phase Three. West Main Street is currently on its second phase of improvements to the roadway, pedestrian facilities, lighting, and water main. This application will continue these improvements with funding from federal dollars. Through the STP grant program, we plan to improve from Cromwell Road to Collins Drive.
This STP grant application is up for discussion.
So, all the way to Collins Drive? That's the interesting part. So that means Collins and West Main will be a major redo or something, or?
So we're
Like, how far past Collins, or will it stop right at the other end of Collins Drive?
It is just past Collins. So we had discussed with the consultant, the, the turning movements that are there currently. And I know people may want us to also bring up the triangle there at Sunshine. The cost in addressing that is something that I think will likely be a future phase, future project, just because of the sheer size of what would have to happen to change all of that in that area. So this would kind of go in initially as we'll get the water main taken care of, we'll get upgraded ADA pedestrian facilities, we'll get the lighting done. We'll also be looking at the Collins Drive. You've got your right turn, but it's also kind of at a skew, so we should probably rethink some of the movements and traffic, well, traffic movements through there that will then correlate with how is traffic being handled at Sunshine? And then we'll kind of save the large, I mean, elephant in the room when it comes down to it, the triangle for a later project.
Since you said Phase Three, how many phases are we looking at to take that all the way to Bailey Station?
When we, when we talked with, and this is through Henigan and Associates, who applied for and received the Safe Rides to School grant for us. So they have some familiarity with this section of West Main. I think we got up to five. To break that down into manageable pieces.
Right.
Typically, when you apply for these grants, you want to be in that kind of eight hundred to million dollar.
Right.
Anything more than that, you're going to get points knocked down between seven fifty and a million. It actually scores a little higher. So that's the reason why we're biting off this chunk. The, the difficulty, I think, became pretty quickly obvious in the discussion with their engineers and all the other engineers we've talked to, is that the triangle, addressing the triangle, is going to require the acquisition of probably at least two of the properties there at the intersection. And that's, that's a, that's a big, that's a big undertaking, and it's an expensive undertaking. And it's not necessarily something we can do tomorrow.
Right.
Because of the ownership of the property, other homes. So we felt that this was a good section to kind of continue the momentum on West Main. And again, spreading around some of our application from using Trek, who did the safe, the Safe Streets for All application for us, and Henigan, who used, who did successfully get the Safe Rides to School grant for us, too.
So is our newly appointed MoDOT representative have potential of, are we looking at changing that scoring matrix system? Because I'm not a fan of it at all.
I, I, that'll be something I, that'd be an interesting conversation. I'm going to listen a lot, okay? Mike's referring to the fact that I was just recently appointed to the statewide local public, public agency advisory council for MoDOT. It's a statewide position. It's a three-year term. And yeah, I, in, in my twenty-plus years of doing this, I've touched just about every aspect of, of these LPA grants, and certainly the scoring matrix. Sometimes I think is just misunderstood and is probably not very clear. So that has nothing to do with this grant application for another phase of West Main, though. Okay.
So living on, right off Collins where I live, and knowing the amount of traffic, especially associated with the school, and just free flow of traffic through there, I mean, Collins is a major hub to be able to disseminate that, that flow. So we've, we've got West Main right here that we can kind of go around, because there's, there's side streets that parallel this area and perpendiculars to come off of it, but right there, we can't go left through the trailer park to go to, you know, we can't do that, so we have to go north on Cromwell there to, to get around. I mean, it's, and with school, I can't, my, like, how Mike says, now, my brain can't wrap around how we're going to be able to successfully accomplish that with, with school traffic. And I mean, I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be done. It's just that the, the scope, the magnitude of it seems very it's a big project. It's, is it, is it, is it practical? Is it doable, I guess?
As, as part of these discussions, and Michael, you know, Michael and I had a, we probably spent an hour and a half, two hours, just visiting with Kurt Henigan, Kurt Westrich with Henigan, and Igor, whose last name I forget. But it's something Russian. A very, very, I mean, two sharp guys. And I think right away, when we started talking about the alignment of Collins to West Main, and we talked about Sunshine's alignment with West Main, we realized that those are going to be standalone, major projects. We're not contemplating that with this grant application. This is to, to add the other amenities that need to be brought to the area anyway, to connect to Collins for the pedestrian. I mean, we have a very nice eight-foot-wide pedestrian path that we installed a few years back, upgraded the streetlights, were able to redo the road surface. This is going to be essentially that, as opposed to how do we solve our triangle? How do we, how do we fix the way Collins connects to West Main? That's going to have to be a separate project.
But, but the whole road structure of West Main from I fifty-five basically to Collins, is that going to be redone?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So we, we could come, we could come back and get additional funding for the triangle and the issue on Collins, right? So right now, we're just getting the streets and sidewalks, the crosswalks, because I was on here when we originally did this project many moons ago.
Correct. This, this is an upgrade of the existing pedestrian structures, the road surface, the curbs, the street lighting. The amount of effort that will go into addressing the triangle, which, as we've, as we know, we've had engineers here who have explained to us when we had Jackie Knight from CBB come in when we were looking at the daycare, it's not a perfect piece of, of roadway, but it works.
Sure.
If you're not from the area, it's probably a bit of a riddle. If you are from the area, there are those times where we might have to play dodgeball anyway.
Okay, and we'll, and we will try to incorporate that as best we can, or so that
This is not part of that grant application.
No, sir. That the timing of it is not associated with school traffic. Is it, is there a way that we can do this, so it'll be more summer oriented, so that the, that the school traffic will not be as volumous as it could be?
The, the award of the grants, the deadline to, to apply for this grant, and this is just applying for the grant. This isn't the project. The deadline is February. They announce them in June?
Yeah, I believe so.
They announce them later in the year. And odds are, this would be announced as a two thousand and twenty-seven project or even later than that. So we have plenty of time, if we are successful with the grant application, to stagger this in the best possible way, which would be those two and a half months in the summertime that would have minimal impact to school, school traffic.
Very good. Okay. I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the STP application for nine thousand five hundred dollars for Henigan and Associates.
Second.
Motion's been made and second and roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simbleton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving right along, ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have Bill eighty, forty-eight oh four on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight oh four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, allowing the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Fifteen, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight oh four is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Mayor, City Council, what you're looking at here is about two and a half to close to three years' worth of hard work. Obviously, we had a, a number of internal staff changes during that period of time. And there were some changes with the FOP fifteen. But we stayed on it the entire time. Ultimately, Legal Counsel Jim Hetledge with Bryan's Law Firm, Chief and Captain Pippen, and myself, and the Collective Bargaining Unit for the PD, who I thought did a wonderful job and should be commended for coming to the table to have honest discussions, open discussions. And I'm excited that we're able to bring this to you tonight. We will kick off a brand-new year with a four-year agreement that memorializes an agreement between now this collective bargaining unit, FOP fifteen, and the City of Festus. Have to answer any questions.
If there's no further discussion, is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight oh four for the second time in title only?
Some move.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight oh four for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight oh four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, allowing the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Fifteen, and establishing an effective date. Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Councilman Weiner?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yep.
Bill forty-eight oh four has passed. We have Bill forty-eight oh five on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-eight oh five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, establishing a no parking zone on the north and south side of the two hundred block of Benton Drive, and establishing the placement of signs enforcing the no parking zone, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-eight oh five is now up for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As you heard tonight, very well presented by Ms. Otto, and then previously from Mr. Darden last month. They live at the end of a dead-end section of Benton Drive. If, if you look at a map, this is, this is not the Benton Drive that there's two, two Benton Drives. This is the dead-end section. It is a very narrow street. It's about twenty-one feet wide. The right-of-way there is wider than that, but the actual road structure itself is essentially two ten-foot lanes. After Mr. Darden's comments in November, we thought that some signage in reference to not blocking the driveways there on the end of the street would be beneficial. But those are not enforceable, because there's no ordinance that says that they're placed there. So what's before you here this evening is to establish a no parking zone on both sides of the street. Not necessarily for the purpose of addressing these concerns, but those are certainly a large part of it. It brought it to our attention. But due to the narrowness of the road, the sharp turn that it takes to get onto Benton Drive, there are some concerns there also for safety vehicles, emergency vehicles. This is certainly something, as it has been mentioned tonight, depending on what council would like to do, pass, fail, or table, and allow us to collect more information. But we did want to get it in front of you so that the residents in the neighborhood saw that we were, we were responding to, to their concerns.
Hey, Greg, a couple of questions, because I'm looking at a picture here, and I did go by and look at it, and it's a very narrow street. So you're saying, and I apologize, I didn't look up the right-of-way, so our right-of-way exists two foot on each side, is that correct?
If that.
Okay. Because in the back picture here, I see a FedEx truck and a Honda. And though I'm a horrible driver, there's nothing getting through there if we got an emergency call.
Correct.
And my other concern is, if I understand you correctly, so if I park my vehicle on the street in front of somebody's driveway like this FedEx truck, there's right now no statutory requirements for somebody to move that vehicle so I can access my driveway. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
I understand this is Otto's point. I understand Mrs. Otto's point, but this isn't, I'm not reacting to an individual complaint. I'm reacting to my visual and the photos I'm looking at. I'm a little concerned we've got some safety issues over there that I think we got to figure out.
I kind of feel like because we've had a different opinion given to us tonight that some may or may not agree with, but it is a different opinion than what we have previously been presented with. Mike, I understand your safety concerns, and I think that is a viable point. But rather than rush to a decision that could possibly do better by having a little bit more time to study it, I would think that we should put this off until the next meeting and investigate it as best we can and try and come up with a summary that would be based just not on a knee-jerk reaction, but on a little, a little, a little thought process going on.
I agree.
Yeah, I have a question. Would it be out of the question to pass an ordinance where you can't block a driveway? Because, help me, Michael, I believe the ordinance says you have to have two off-street parking to put a structure in a home? Is that not true?
Maybe more of a Mark question there, Kevin, related to requirements related to a structure. And unfortunately, Mark's not here this evening.
Right.
So I, I couldn't give you the answer tonight.
I, I know, I know in the past, from experience, we've, we've had situations where you can't allow people to, to block driveways. I'd like, like Brian said, a little more time to study this because if we require off-street parking for a home and people block that, that, so maybe Brian can look into legality of possibly not blocking someone's driveway being a problem, and then the fact, more time to study this and make sure we do the right thing on the situation.
Can I perhaps offer up a, a suggestion or a recommendation? And it's because of a conversation Councilman Dennis and I had earlier today. We've taken a much more clinical approach to dealing with traffic problems. The traffic calming that the council adopted several years ago, when we're talking about traffic moving through neighborhoods, stop signs, things of that sort, require some type of analysis. Perhaps we just, we ask an engineer to take a look at it and see what the recommendations would be for concerns about emergency vehicle access, concerns for obviously the residents to be able to access their property. We do have that on-call list of, of engineers that we could quickly queue up one and ask them to come in for a minimal cost and provide us with an opinion. Would that perhaps be a better way to approach that?
Yes.
Potential is, it could be just to have no parking on one side, or I guess, I feel like there's too many variables at play just to make a decision.
Okay.
Greg, I think we probably need to table this till we find out more information on it. I think she did a good presentation, so we've heard both sides. But I think it'd be a good idea to table this for a while, find more information on it.
Is there any further discussion?
If I could throw one thing, Councilman Boyer, something that just everybody needs to consider. So currently, right now, though, there's no legality that we have. If somebody blocks the driveway over there in a neighbor dispute, City PD can't do anything. So just keep that back in mind as we do a traffic study, because that traffic's got to go somewhere, and we got a lot of driveways over there.
Is there any other further discussion? Is there any councilmen that would like to have this bill placed on the next agenda for a second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, Bill forty-eight oh five has been tabled. And we have Bill forty-eight oh six on the agenda. Would the clerk please read Bill forty-eight oh?
Bill number forty-eight oh six. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, annexing to the city certain real properties described herein, determining that said annexations are reasonable and necessary to the proper development of said city, and that the city has the ability to furnish normal municipal services to the areas to be annexed, and specifying the new boundary lines to which the city limits are extended by reason of said annexations.
Now, Bill forty-eight oh six is now open for discussion.
I'd like the clerk to read the addresses and legal descriptions of each property, please. I'm kidding.
That makes sense.
Understood. I know. Just to, to address this, as you know, with the I-55 US-67 project, there are these properties and a couple of others that are served by Water District Five. After the improvements to sixty-seven go in, they will no longer be able to serve these properties. We have the ability to serve these properties. And, but in order to do that, our code requires them to be in the city limits. They have to be city residents. So this solves that problem. And once MoDOT makes their improvements, or begins to make their improvements out on sixty-seven, it's a function of us swapping some meters out. With their petitions for annexation, they already provided us with water contracts. We already have most, if not all, these folks on our database, so we'll be able to start serving them when that time arrives, which looks like it may be in March or April of next year.
These residents a lot were caught off guard. Please correct me if I'm wrong, or remind me. There's no cost to them, right?
No cost, a deposit.
We, as everybody does, no, but no cost for service taps or nothing?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Brian.
I had one comment on the ordinance that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. Section two of the ordinance on the second page references, "The council finds that more than seven days have passed since the time of the hearing. No written objections have been filed. These are all voluntary annexations, so the written objection process isn't really applicable here. So I would recommend that the council, that a council member make a motion to amend the ordinance by striking section two and renumbering sections three, four, and five as two, three, and four."
I'll make the motion on what our attorney just said.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No. No. To amend the ordinance to eliminate the section two that we have now, and then renumber the other sections as the two, three, and four.
Correct.
Hey, I got that right.
That's why we have a mayor, sir, Councilman Vins.
Okay, are there any other discussion? Is there any councilman that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-eight oh six for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-eight oh six for the second time?
Bill number forty-eight oh six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, annexing to the city certain real properties described herein, determining that said annexations are reasonable and necessary to the proper development of said city, and that the city has the ability to furnish normal municipal services to the areas to be annexed, and specifying a new boundary lines to which the city limits are extended by reason of said annexations. Councilman Vins? Councilman Cook?
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Councilman Weiner?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Bill forty-eight oh six has passed. New business.
None, sir.
Old business.
None, sir.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to know that we've got, I think, would you say nine people running? Something like that, and the, the next election for the four warrants. People need to know that we, as a council, we do what's best for our employees and for our township. We've always tried to do the best that we can do at all times. We want the people to be proud of our town, so we try to do that which is best. I advise you not to get on the council if you don't have the best for Festus in mind. And at this time, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and that's all I have, sir.
Alright, sir, thank you. Councilman Weiner?
I just second what Councilman Boyer just said. We're here because we love the city and try to do what's best for the city, and there's a lot involved in, in this city. We're, we're on, we're lower down, you know, there, there are people at all these different, you know, public works and streets and I, all these different departments that are, that are doing such a great job. There's Greg, there's the mayor, that so many of these big decisions are being made. And to, to be able to be on this, it's, it's an undertaking. It's a, it's a job, and we don't take it lightly. There's a lot of responsibility associated with this. You know, when you start talking about tearing up roads, putting in lights, doing sewers, water, I mean, all that, it affects a lot of people. And so, so we do do our best, and I'm just, I'm proud to be on it. I'm not up for reelection, but I'm proud to be on it, and I want, I want people to also keep that in mind, so, sir.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Dennis.
Yes, yes, I'd just like to look back on this year and talk about all the good work that we've done. We've made huge infrastructure changes with our water lines, our roads, and we continue to do what's best for the city. And there's a lot of hard work does go into that, so I think the thanks goes to all of our staff and our departments for the good work they do. Other than that, look forward to the next year and want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cook?
Thank you. Great, congratulations on your appointment, because now I get to complain about Ganesh Drive. So, congratulations on the MoDOT position, and I'd like to tell all the employees, city workers, and residents, please have a safe and Merry Christmas. They did a great job this past year, and I'm looking very excited for 2025 from our employees and, and city administration to see what the future brings. So please, everybody be safe and have a great Christmas.
Thank you. Councilman Collier?
I'd like to reiterate that. I think as a city, we are growing. We've done a lot of improvements, spent a lot of money. We've got really good people in places that We've got really good people in places that we need to have them. And I think we're well on our way to growing even bigger. And I appreciate all the hard work that all of our employees have done over the year, whether it was an emergency or whether it was just a routine job. And I also would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Templeton.
I don't know how to say it much differently than anybody else has, but it's been a crazy year. Without a doubt, we've seen a lot of progress that seemed extremely painful, but we made progress through it. We keep on going. So we couldn't do that with everybody, without everybody sitting up here. Everybody in the seats, everybody that works for the city, as well as the people who live in this town. I hear nothing but great things throughout the year about all the different events we've hosted. And I know Barb put in her staff report about, uh, the Santa House and the letters. If you have not gone on to YouTube to watch the videos of the, the letters being read, it'll be one of the best things you do all year and it'll put a smile on your face. These kids are very creative. So that was great. But thanks to everybody. Thanks to all of our first responders, cause not, Christmas doesn't always happen on Christmas Day for you guys. So greatly appreciated and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Councilman Vins.
Greg, the same old light situation. But this time it's Fifth Street. You see how dark it is from by Public Works? The, the streetlights on that street don't want to work half the time from Cromwell all the way it passed the, all the way past the Public Works. You might get one light there and it's dark. And I know that's, we, we might have one good light here and there, but that street really needs.
Are there lights that are out?
Yes.
Okay. We'll, we'll check for tags and call them in.
Yeah, they're.
We did. Okay. So we're on it.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of them. Yeah, okay. I mean, and I, I know that's just some of what we have the, of the city, but that has really been a dark spot the past few weeks I've been noticing. And, uh, like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And do appreciate all the, what everyone does for the city, employees and everything. We, we really appreciate you make us look good and we thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Councilman Vins. Well, I think almost everything has been said that I'd like to say. But I'm gonna save it anyway. We have had a good year. A lot of things have happened in the, in the city. A lot of things were taken care of. Uh, people on Main Street here are, have been patient with us. Although we've received our fair number of phone calls about it, but really when you look at it, they've been patient with us. And we're marching on to finish it up. Uh, we're lucky to have the caliber of employees that we have all the way down to the laborers, the very bottom employees, for lack of a better term. But, uh, everybody tries to do their very best for the city. Uh, our police officers, our firemen, they are always on the alert and always in the line of fire. And I appreciate that more than probably anybody here because I've done that before. Um, we're lucky. And as I have said many, many times, we are very fortunate to have hired the best city administrator that this city has ever had, ever had. And he continues to do the best for the city, keeps us informed. He and I have a great working relationship. And, uh, we're gonna do better next year. And I would like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and all the employees a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I know what it's like to have to work Christmas and New Years. So for those firemen and those policemen that have to do that on that day, I understand it. So having said that, I will entertain. Um, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.